Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Lazara.
Here.
Alderman Zizmarsky.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley. Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Shaki.
Yes.
I declare a quorum. I make a motion to approve minutes dated July 14, 2011. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, I'd like to hand the floor over to Mayor Police and there is a brief announcement.
Actually, I'll defer to Jeff. He's going to talk about the Elgin O'Hare update and the Tollway situation today.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Alderman Winger. As you know, staff's been following the proposed Elgin O'Hare Western bypass for quite some time now. I'm sure you're aware of the recent public hearings and all the information on the news and newspaper about the proposed Elgin O'Hare and the Tollway capital plan. They did have their board meeting today. They did pass their capital plan. Elgin O'Hare was included in the capital plan, upwards of $3.1 billion for the construction of the project. We all know it's going to cost a little bit more than 3.1, so there's still a little bit of a shortfall, but, you know, we're a large way there so far. So, we'll keep monitoring that. We'll keep you up to date on what happens with the funding that's still left out there that we have to come up with. Not we have to come up with, but somebody has to come up with to help complete the project. So, we'll keep you up to date on that. Just a quick fact, Elgin O'Hare project alone will create 65,000 jobs in the area. Many of that is going to be right here in Wood Dale. So, that is the update, and we'll keep you posted as things progress.
Thank you, Mr. Murmurs, and Alderman Police.
Just on a quick note, the VFW is going to be having a dedication for a 10-year anniversary for September 11th. More details to follow, but I just wanted to let everybody know on that day, September 11th.
Thank you. Next item is report and recommendation, release of a letter of credit for Top Golf. Mr. Forrest.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. As you may recall, I believe at the first committee meeting in May, this item came forward, and after some discussion, it was decided to table this to a further date. There were a couple of issues that the Park District had, some questions that we needed to answer. Since that time, I've had the city engineer address those questions from the Park District. We kind of, I wanted to wait through a summer, rainy season, to just see how everything kind of worked out there. I'm not aware of any issues. Haven't gotten any calls from the Park District complaining about any of the issues that we talked about early in the spring. So, at this point, I've spoken with Baxter Woodman again, and their recommendation stands to go forward and give them the final release of this last $5,750. This is the last piece of the bond that was posted with the permit for the construction of the building, so.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead, make a motion, look for a second, and then I'll call on the question. And let's, well, Alderman Coles.
I thought they were supposed to do something up on the top of Top Golf, on the top railing. Did they ever do that? Yeah, was supposed to put a railing because safety?
No, at one point, they came in, they wanted to get a permit to put a structure
Structure on.
Up there, like a pergola and
Yeah.
Like an extra bar up there. But that's unrelated to this particular bond.
Okay, all right. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Second your motion.
Alderman Zizmarsky, you're going to second the motion. My motion is to, is to release the final bond payment of $5,750 to, in addition to release the letter of credit for Top Golf. And then I do have a second. And a question? Anything else on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is report and recommendation on the Strom Variation Detached Garage, 144 North Walnut. Mr. Forrest.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yes, Mr. Strom has filed an application requesting an increase in the maximum allowable height for an accessory structure in the R4 Single Family Residential District from the maximum permitted 15-feet height to 18-feet nine inches, an increase of three feet nine inches, to permit the construction of a detached garage. This is actually the reconstruction of an existing garage. From what I understand, their plans are to remove the roof framing and then reframe this, alter the pitch, put a dormer on that garage, and they'll be at the 18-foot nine-inch height. Their reason for doing this is contained in the memo. Basically, they are on a corner lot. They actually have three city right-of-ways. This lot is a corner lot, but they have, so they have Walnut Street on one side, Sunny Side on the other, and then there's an alley that runs north and south at their west property line. The detached garage is at the west, western part of the lot. It backs up to the neighbors' detached garage to the south. And the home that they have now, it's a masonry house. It has a crawl space, not a lot of storage in the house. There are some patios and driveways on this, so the lot is close to maximum allowable coverage. So, it's been determined that probably the best way for him to get some additional storage would be to put a storage loft above the garage. They're proposing to put a pull-down stairway, so there will not be a permanent stairway that goes up and down. So, there really wouldn't be much of a chance to make it a habitable area. It was, I should note that the Community Development Commission voted unanimously to make a recommendation to council to approve it. Mr. Strom is here to answer any questions you might have, or if you want him to do a presentation. He's available for that.
Do we have any questions for, for Mr. Strom? Alderman Shaki.
Just one. How many panels will that door include? The large garage door?
The overhead door?
Yes.
Mr. Strom, if you could go to the podium where there is a microphone.
To answer your question specifically, I won't know exactly till I order the door, but most likely, a seven-foot-high overhead door is going to consist of five panels, I believe.
Five.
Five panels vertically. I'm not
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Coles.
Can I ask you one question?
Certainly.
How come you're putting a dormer on the roof?
Basically, the way I've planned it, the dormer's going to face east, which is the, that is the view that I get, the primary view that I get from my backyard. So, really, it's strictly there for aesthetics. And number one, it allows light into the storage space that I'm creating in the attic. And number two, it just enhances the aesthetics of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'm going to make a motion to concur with the Community Development Commission to grant a variation in the maximum permitted height for accessory structures in the R4 Single Family Residence District from the maximum permitted 15-feet to 18-feet nine inches to permit the construction of a detached garage at the property located at 144 North Walnut. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Anything else remaining on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then, any final comments from you, Mr. Strom?
No, thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you. Next item is just items to be considered at future meetings. And A is City of Wood Dale Flood Plane Buyout Policy. And Mr. Forrester, Mr. Murmurs, is this just in preparation for when we do eventually have monies, significant monies for this?
Correct.
And just to get the priority listing and that sort of thing?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And B, Citywide Sign Project in September. Item C, Amendments to Local Building Code, October. Item D, Commuter Station Coffee Action, September. And we, Thorndale Corridor Zoning, Overly District, in September. Item F, Senior Housing Proposals, September. Any other items to be added to the committee, or any questions, comments on this? I make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Call to order the June 9th Meeting of Finance and Administration Committee. First item is approval of minutes of May 12, 2011. Do I have a motion? I'll make a motion. I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Motion carries.
Aye.
The first item is, the subject is a additional bank to our investment policy, and I think our finance director is passing out a list of the banks right now. Mr. Wilson, would you like to explain?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Originally, as per my memo, this was going to be a pretty, pretty straightforward look at just adding Wood Dale Bank and Trust, the former Bank of Commerce that's coming to town. Couple of reasons, you know, they've been very embracing of the community, sponsoring Prairie Fest. We've had a couple of meetings with them. And the bank that they're, a part of, Windtrust Financial, is pretty prominent in the Chicagoland area. They have 13 different charters around the area, a number of different local banks around. And so, due to their, you know, embracing of the community and want to be involved in everything, we thought it prudent to add them to the approved banking list. So, that's the start of this. In researching what it would take to add them to the exhibit that I just passed out to you, it was noticed that the exhibit was not updated in the city code back in 2009. So, we'll have to, when we, should you decide to go that route to add them to the list, we'll have to prepare the ordinance such that this list gets added to the, to that particular section of the code. So, and then there's one other interesting thing. There's a section 1.502, which is seven articles above 1.509, which is the investment policy, that contradicts the schedule that I just gave to you guys. It has banks that don't even exist anymore on there, some banks that aren't domiciled in Wood Dale, aren't even close. So, what I'd like to do, regardless of whether or not you want to add Wood Dale Bank and Trust, is to go through and clean up those two sections of the code and make them match the exhibit that I presented to you tonight.
Okay, so I'll make a motion now that we approve the new list of banks, including the Wood Dale Bank and Trust and the Edward County for lease only. Then we'll go to the other one. So, I make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Anybody against? No? Motion passes. As to the other part you're going to supply us then at the next meeting, full council meeting with the updated draft, or whatever you're talking about, for the ordinance?
Correct.
And we can, we can approve that at that time. I'd like to have it in hand before we approve it, though.
Well, certainly, yeah.
Anything else? Okay, the other is, how about vehicle stickers for antique vehicles? I'll let Mr. Coles, Alderman Coles, talk about this. It's his idea. All right. Everybody knows that a car gets 20 years old, it can be considered an antique. Well, there's antiques that people put regular plates on and put vanity plates on, but an antique has a plate which says AV on it, which is sort of a cream-colored plate, and that cream-colored plate is good for five years. So, what I'm trying to do is, there's a lot of people, including myself, have a couple of antiques that are here in Wood Dale, and I use in the parades in Wood Dale and in Bensonville. And I pay for the stickers like everybody else, and I, I've used the car three times this year so far. Otherwise, it's been sitting in the garage. Now, I would like to see if we could give the people that have antique cars a little break on the city sticker. Now, even if it's $5 or $10, it would be, it would be, it would be nice. Now, the people have to realize that they'd have to bring in their registration, and they'd have to look at it, that it says AV on, on the plate number. In other words, they give you the plate, the number, and then they put AV after it. That means it's an antique vehicle by the state of Illinois, and that it's not to be used driving around on the street during the daytime or anything like that. It's only to go to shows or to go to parades or stuff like that. I'll get to a repair shop to be fixed. So, I was just wondering if we can help the guys that have antique cars a little bit. And you want to talk about the green cars? Not, not yet. Okay, that's all I want to say. Yeah, I can, I agree with Alderman Coles that even if it's a 1947 Hudson, if it has regular plates, as far as I'm concerned, it's a regular car. But if they have the antique plates, as Alderman Coles said, then I would go along with the staff recommendation that we charge $7 for the vehicle stickers, for the city vehicle stickers for those cars. And I'll make that in the form of a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Any questions, comments? Well, we can vote on it then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we'll get the other two. Oh, yes.
Thank you. Just a procedural clarification. Currently, and just for updating the code for this caveat, currently, the code said there's only one honorary license per household for the senior discount. Would you like there to be able to have a senior discount and an antique car discount, or one or the other?
We hadn't thought about that. Well, I would think if it's a senior and they have an antique car plus their own driving car, I would think that they should have the $1 fee plus the antique car fee for the city sticker for the older car that they don't normally drive. Does anybody disagree with that? Does that clear that up? You have your direction?
Yeah, I mean, if you want to add that into the motion, we can, or we'll draft it into the ordinance for sure. I mean.
You just add that to the part of the motion, and would you second it?
Yes, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion passes. The staff recommends on the green vehicles in the metro lot that we don't do anything at, with that at this time, because it's hard to determine what a green vehicle is. Does anybody have any comments on that? Okay, and they will just pass that one. Staff recommends approving a modification of the definition of truck for purposes of selling vehicle stickers. And as the note says in front of you, people get regular plates from the state for even a 3/4-ton truck, which doesn't make a lot of sense. I don't know why the state does that. But I would agree to, as staff is recommending, to keep it as it is, a truck over three, over 8,000 pounds. Is that what it is? Mr. Wilson?
Sure. Currently, the code, the way it's written now, is it says truck or B plate. And then, but then everything above a B plate, D and up, it actually has the suffix of the plate distinction after the gross volume weight, the GVW. But for just trucks, it doesn't have the suffix after it. So, we've had some people argue that we forgot the B when we wrote the code, and since they don't have a truck plate on it, that it's not really a truck for the purposes of getting a vehicle sticker. So, really, the question is, do we want to go by the plating from the Secretary of State, or, you know, sure, you know, everybody knows what a truck looks like, and go, do we do it by make and model chassis type, or do we do it by Secretary of State plating?
We don't use the letter B now?
Oh, we do.
And determine on this?
We do. It's kind of the gray area where, you know, they have a truck that gets Purple Heart plate, or the Chicago Cubs plate, or something like that, and they're saying they're not using it for commercial purposes. And so, they're arguing that they should get the passenger rate, because it's not a commercial vehicle, even though it's a truck.
Well, my opinion is if they can pay, it's extra cost for those specialized plates, aren't they? If they can afford to buy a specialized plate, they can afford to pay for their city sticker as a truck. So, I would recommend, let's open it for discussion. I'll make a motion to leave it as it is. In other words, your determination, as you say, stated first, not the state's. Okay, I'll make the motion that way. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Anybody disagree? Alderman, fellow down there, Art Woods.
Thank you.
You're so far away from me, I just forget, you know.
Just so I'm clear. So, you want anybody over a certain weight is going to be classified as a truck, whether they have a state plate issued classifying it as a truck or not? So, you're going to make the assumption that it's a commercial vehicle and a B plate? Is that correct?
Partially. We're looking to set it so that if it's over a certain weight and certain make, model, body style, that it's a truck. The B plate caveat would kind of come in if it's like a cargo van or something to that effect. So, we're looking to just, like I said, I mean, you know, everybody knows what a truck looks like, you know, two or four seats, a bed. Just kind of eyeball test, more or less, or, you know, make, model on it. And then, just like the box trucks or the cargo vans or whatever, if they're B plates, then they would still fall into that. But a truck that's not a B plate, that's still a truck, we want to kind of close the ambiguity in, in that under 8,000-pound section of the code.
Doesn't, I mean, obviously, the states thought about this, and I would agree that some people have a regular plate and use it as a truck. But I would also agree that quite a few people that have a regular plate and use it just as a car to occasionally pick up, you know, playset for their kids, or, you know, wood chips for around the tree, or some paper bricks once in a while. And I think in part that that kind of unduly punishes them in an effort to solve or close that loophole.
Yeah, Mr. Wilson?
Certainly, and we have had that discussion downstairs as well. And if that's the direction that, you know, the eight of you want to go with it, is that we follow what the Secretary of State puts on their vehicle, then we can certainly go that way. Just it
Mr. Mayor.
Brad, what about Suburbans and stuff? I mean, I've seen painters use those trucks. You going to consider that a truck or, or a car?
No, that's a car.
I mean, technically, that's an SUV, so unless they have a B plate on it, that wouldn't fall into this realm.
But same type of deal, they're using it as their commercial vehicle.
Alderman Winger.
Thank you. I, I do like how people do the Cubs, Purple Heart, et cetera, plates, and that those organizations are, I believe, to some degree, profiting at, and those contributions. So, I believe that is a good thing. It's great the Secretary of State is giving them a break. But we have to remember in Wood Dale, the reason why we do this vehicle sticker, and that's to gain some revenue on the wear and tear that vehicles place on our roadways and on our street system, that sort of thing. And trucks are heavier than cars. So, the whole point of the sticker and making it more expensive isn't to penalize a truck owner and the weight it carries, but to charge more effectively to cover. Why we do this sticker in the first place, why I say to leave everything as is. Thank you.
Alderman Zazario.
What difference in prices are we talking about here?
Sure. Regular passenger vehicle's 15, and the lowest graded truck, the B plate truck, is 30. So, a $15 difference.
Alderman Woods.
Will there be any issue with us calling the vehicle a truck versus the state of Illinois recognizing it as a truck or not a truck?
I haven't heard anything from legal saying that there's an issue with that. He said that, I believe, trying to remember what Pat said, that it, that some communities do it both ways. It kind of, there's not a predominant, it's not like we'd be the only ones doing it this way. But there are a number of communities that just go by the Secretary of State, and they're blind to the make and model. They only do it by plate. I mean, and realistically, hate to say it, that I don't, that it doesn't matter to me, but it doesn't really particularly matter to me. We just need to know for certain and write it appropriately so that we don't run into this in the future and stand at the window arguing with somebody for 10 minutes over, that's not a truck, or that's a truck. That's really all we're looking to do here. Just remove the gray and move forward.
Alderman Woods.
What specifically are we looking at for not looking at a Suburban and calling that a truck with ladders and stuff on it? Are we just looking at pickups and step van slash cargo van type vehicles? Is that where the discrepancy is coming in, or the ambiguities in between whether that's a truck or not a truck?
Yeah, the only ones we ran into this year were, I guess, just your standard pickup truck. And I think two were Dodge Rams, and one was, I think, I'm trying to think, it was like an older Dakota that the guy had gotten. So, this was three Dodges for whatever it's worth.
Just outlawed Dodges? That's all I have. Thanks.
I, I'm, to be honest with you, I'm kind of confused. I have a neighbor that has an open back truck, and his son has an open back truck, and they're, they're cars. I mean, they just like the open back so they can, that's what they enjoy. I also see somebody coming down the street before, the night before garbage pickup, picking up garbage, picking up metal, whatever, and he's got the same size truck, but he's got sides on the back end of it. But it's no bigger a truck than the ones my neighbor has. And I really don't know how to make that distinction. I'm going to withdraw my motion, if I may, and let somebody else make a motion. Maybe Alderman Coles knows more about this type of thing than I do, because it's, I don't know what you call a truck. Alderman Coles. All right. When you go, when you go to, when you go to the dealer and you want to buy a truck, he takes you usually to a truck guy, truck salesman that knows all about them, not a passenger car guy. So, people buy trucks, a lot of ladies buy trucks. They call them lady cowboys because they're driving a pickup truck. And I'm no, nothing against the ladies driving trucks.
Sure.
Because you see a lot of them. And trucks are bought usually not through the passenger car salesman, but they have, in the dealership, a lot of them have departments, which is truck department, just like they have fleet department. And them are bought through there. And as far as the vans go, the vans that have all the windows are not considered trucks. They're considered vans. And vans are like, you're going to find passenger, or 15-passenger van, and it has all the windows, that has a regular, regular plate on it. If it was a oneward panels, it would have a truck plate on it. Or if they get away with it once in a while, they'll put a, not an AV, but a, a
RV.
RV plate on it. Now, we have a woman that's on the corner of Wood Lane Court, not Wood Lane Court, Woodley. She has a dog thing that has her big, she, she washes dogs, and she's got, uh, uh, plates on it that shouldn't even be on the thing, because it is a recreation vehicle. It's a work truck, but she has them on. And she drives that thing all over the place. So, it depends upon how you look at it. If you buy a truck with B plates, you got B plate. There's half ton, 3/4 ton, there's ton and a half, there's two ton, and you could go all the way up to a G plate, or a, or a D plate, or something. And all of them go according to the weight of the truck. And that's, you can get a Ford with, you could get a Ford with dual wheels in the back, and you could get same truck with only two wheels in the back. So, I mean, that's, that's how you, how they sell wheels in the back. So I mean, that's, that's how you, how they sell the truck. A truck is a truck. It may, they may use it as a passenger car, but it's definitely a truck.
Alderman Winger.
Thank you, Alderman Shaki. I'm going to make a motion, while I am going to, not support it, but I'm going to make it in the affirmative, to recommend to city council to concur with the Secretary of State's defining of truck for purposes of selling vehicle stickers in Wooddale, and to direct the attorney to prepare such an ordinance.
I'll second.
Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I think the ayes have it. If you can have the attorney draw up something to that effect. I just, I just don't want people with sport trucks to be included in that, that's all. If it's obviously, I think what the staff says here, a truck is a truck. If it's obviously a big truck, of course not. But if it's a passenger vehicle, even though it's an open-ended back end, it still should be a passenger vehicle. So, yes, Alderman Smersky.
The only reason there's no B truck on my license plates is because there's a Department of Defense tag there. And on the other side, there's an emblem. There's no other place on that license plate to put the B truck stamp. That's why I think the state of Illinois foregone stamping those. But on your registration, it does state what your truck is. It will tell you if it's a B truck. It'll say 8,000 pounds, B truck class. So you'd have to check people's registrations.
Is that what we do?
For new vehicles, it is, yes.
So that would solve the problem, just checking the registration. If it's a B or above, it's a truck. If it's not a B or whatever, it's a car. Is that what we agreed on? Is that a motion? Alderman Winger.
Well, I really thought, thank you, I really thought the issue was, is that the secretary is allowing B trucks to be considered a car, correct? And people are saying, well, I have this, and the Secretary of State is allowing it to be a car, why don't you, Wooddale? Isn't that, is that the issue?
You're correct, yes.
So my motion was, you know, as staff recommended, to go along with just doing the same thing that the Secretary of State is doing. But, you know, and I voted no, and with what Alderman Smersky is saying, is that there is a way to know if it's a B truck or not. And it's going to be bigger than a car, you know, so I thought we would just follow what we always follow. So I think people are saying that they'd feel that the we should honor what the Secretary of State is doing it, because the Secretary of State is doing it. And they're probably doing it because the organizations are probably statewide organizations that people are supporting.
So even a Hummer would have a passenger car sticker?
Correct, yeah.
So you're just going, in other words, you're going to change the ordinance so that you're looking at their registration, and if it's a B or higher, it's going to be a truck?
It doesn't, yeah, anything, yeah, correct, yeah.
We're done. Alderman Woods, I'm sorry.
One quick question came to mind. Are there any other issues other than classification and monetary? Are there any policing issues with the classifications being whether they can stop somebody and the argument of giving them a ticket if they do have that truck with a rack and ladders on it, on a car plate? Is that one of the issues that are up that we haven't talked about?
Conveniently, I have Deputy Chief Vesta sitting right behind me, so I will defer to him for that one.
Mr. Wilson, I can't hear you.
So I'm going to defer to Deputy Chief Vesta on that one.
Similar to any licensing issues, any type of issues with registration, we would refer back to the Secretary of State. We have liaison with their Secretary of State Police. We frequently deal with that with some of the bigger trucks that they're out of licensing. They don't have the correct licensing on the trucks. So we call in the Secretary of State Police to deal with those issues. We could do that with any type of vehicle, too, if it comes up.
Alderman Winger.
Thank you. I need clarification. So if a B truck is what's in question, and right now the Secretary of State, if you have the vanity plate, is calling it a car, is that correct?
Not necessarily. We would have to look at the registration to determine that. But like I said, there has been an instance or two where we have seen that to be the case. And the code right now is kind of ambiguous on that, is how to interpret that. So I think per the motion, I know how to interpret that now, and we'll write the ordinance to interpret it that way.
Okay.
So is that B mean business? Or just a class?
Just a class. Yeah, there's a number of different classes with different weights associated with them.
You know, you can take a pickup and put one of those hitches on it for a fifth-wheeler trailer, and it's still a passenger car, but you can have the same thing with a big winch on it, and it's a truck. So I, you know, I think to depend on the Secretary of State, their classification is the best way to do it. Is that what the motion we made was?
That was my interpretation.
Good. We're all set, then. Thank you. The next item is items to be considered at future meetings. Any items anybody would like? No more stickers, no more, oh, yes, yes, sir.
I actually have three items for future meetings. We just finished the fieldwork for our fiscal year 2011 audit. So probably either late October or November, we'll have the annual audit presentation. Where we have a member from the firm come out, kind of talk through the highlights of the audit. Done that the last number of years. So I'll have that either late October or early November, I presume. Unfortunately, we are going to need to do a budget amendment for a couple of the funds that went over. So I'm working on that. It's not sure on the timing on that one, though. It'll be next month, in September, for sure. Just not sure which meeting. And then staff is working on a revenue handbook, where we're going to go through all the different revenues that we have in our budget, and go through and analyze what they are, what authority we have to either charge that or the taxing, like sales taxes, you know, through the state and stuff like that. So go through and look at all of them, and where they come from, how they come from, and what they are, and go through that. That's probably going to be, I think, November-ish. Manager Murmus and myself, we need to talk to make sure that we don't bunch up too many things in one meeting. With the strategic planning and the CAP and this, we don't want to put them all together, so we're going to space those out. I'm thinking probably November for that as well. And then a couple of months ago, you agreed for us to go off the utility tax audit with AM Audit. That's pretty much done. And so we're going to be bringing that back presumably at one of the two meetings next month as well. We have to, staff estimate with them first, and then we'll bring it to you guys for review and discussion.
I have just one quick question. The company that's going to be auditing, how many years have we used them now?
This will be finishing up their third audit with us.
Okay, I would suggest that after this one, we again go to another company, so we have a fresh look at it. So maybe plan next year on having a new company? Does that make sense? I mean, we found money before when we had somebody new come in, or somebody found money that we didn't know we, we had.
Yeah, we can, because the way their contract was written, it was a three-year initial contract with a mutually agreed upon three-year renewal. And so they'll have to come to us with numbers for the renewal, and then we can have the discussion after we get numbers from them.
And if we turn them down, we can turn them down?
Correct.
Okay. All right, that's it, thank you.
Yeah, we can have that conversation a little bit later.
Anything else? If not, I'll make a motion to adjourn the finance committee. Do I have a second? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman.
All right. Call to order the Public Health and Safety Judiciary Committee. Everybody that was here for the last meeting, so we'll go along. Approve the minutes for the meeting of May 12, 2011. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor? All right. Now, I have a citizen from one of the condominiums who are by 219 Spruce Street. She's on the Comedian. I don't know her number of the committee, the house, but it's the one on the opposite side of the retention pond there. Mary Ann, would you, would you come up and I'd like her to speak about the pollution that's in the retention pond, and then we'll continue on? Yes, please.
My name is Marilyn Chappetta, and I'm here representing the residents of the 480 East Montrose Building. It's the condo building which is right next to the pond at Montrose and Spruce. And I'd like to discuss the problem that exists and has existed, a condition rather than a problem, which exists there and has for many years. Before I begin to explain it, I brought some pictures which will do more than words can possibly do. I'll pass them out.
You can't see the water. This is water.
You can see that I'm not exaggerating when I say that there is no recognizable water in that pond. It's just solid algae. And as we all know, algae forms around the perimeter of a pond, and then it just kind of grows inward. That's, that has existed continually, and this year it has completely covered the pond. Anything dark that you're looking at on those pictures is merely a shadow. There is no indication of water there. There's quite a bit of history regarding this pond. In the past, we have made efforts to try to have the city take over the maintenance of that pond, which they have declined to do because they've said that the city is not in the business of maintaining ponds. However, there is another pond in the First Ward that is maintained by the city at the request of the residents. The owner of the pond just is belligerently refusing to maintain it. He, he's a builder who, who many years ago built a fine home around there, the Oakville Estates, those single-family homes, and the brown condo buildings that face 83. He built that pond to effectively help water problems for the whole area. But his contention was that because everybody in that area benefited from that, that we should all contribute to the maintenance of it. And the residents did not agree with that, and he sued us. He lost, and the court determined that the pond was his. It's his ownership. He didn't like the results of that, and he went all the way to the Supreme Court of Illinois. And again, they affirmed the prior court's decision. The pond is his. But he's not been cooperative in maintaining it. There was a bridge, a little decorative. It wasn't functional as a bridge, as you might think a bridge would be, but it was at the north end of the pond. It was attractive when it was built, and it just, because of a lack of maintenance, it just disintegrated. It was falling apart a plank at a time. He would not agree to taking it down or repairing it. So that argument went on for a while. The plan of survey of the property at 480 East Montrose indicated that there was a small portion of that bridge that did belong to the condo building. So we shared the expense with him in order to get it down, because it was truly a safety hazard. I point that out not to tell tales, but merely to tell you that we're not getting any cooperation. And there's another issue that he is, he just balks at doing. There's, again, at the north end of the pond, there's about a 25 by 10-foot patch of grass that belongs to him, and he doesn't mow it. And only when pushed will he do it, and occasionally at that. We've attempted to deal with property maintenance people in the building department to get his cooperation that way. And at some point in all of the conversations that were conducted between the property maintenance person and him, there, I don't know if the city did it, I don't remember, but it was stocked with carp, with the idea that the carp would eat the algae. Well, as you could tell, the carp have stopped dining there because it's, it's not working. And my point is, there must be some, or is there some language in the property ordinance, property maintenance ordinance, which would effectively cover such a situation? It's argued that it's a healthy pond in that there is, there are signs of life in there. So there's that argument against doing anything, on his part, of course. But it's so ugly, there's a smell that comes from it. So my point is, what can be done to address the situation, to force him to do something about it? I know there are, there was, when he built it, it was quite attractive. It was, he did a beautiful job, but that was many, many years ago. He had an air raider which has now, it ceases to function. I've lived there for 14 years, and it was never on all of that time. So it's either broken or just simply it wasn't maintained, and therefore it's not effective. I don't know if there are chemicals that are safe to the environment that would keep that water clear. But I think you'd have to agree with me that if you live next door to that, you wouldn't be proud to say, I live in that building. It's terrible. So what I'm asking is, you know, what can be done as far as our property maintenance code and the language contained in it to affect a change? That's, that's what I have to ask you.
I can certainly, I can certainly talk to Mr. Joe Johnson and Mr. John Forrest and see if we can come up with some sort of solution if there is a loophole in the, in the code or something we can do to help out with the situation, and then we can get back to you. I know they have your contact information.
I just want to go one of these very belligerent, and he will go backwards in time to tell you what a fine builder he was, which he was, and use that as his basis for saying, I'm not going to take care of it. Everybody has to take care of it. But the courts didn't agree. So, yes, I would appreciate that, and somehow somebody could have it out. Well, would they be of any use to you?
I'll thank you.
Yes? Okay, there you are. I'll put this on the wall.
Thank you for talking about it.
Well, thank you for listening. It's, uh... It's, something's got to be done.
Let's see what we can do.
This is an upgrade of a LiveScan and photo booking. If you're wondering what that is. In 2003, they bought a camera that takes fingerprints and pictures. And they had a, that's a scanner for anybody that gets arrested. And I will let our Deputy Chief, Mr., tell you about it. I read his article about it. Yeah, print, the printing machine is 1990, so that's pretty old for the detectives nowadays. Okay? You're on your, let's go.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, the current LiveScan photo book, LiveScan system that we use to fingerprint all the arrestees, that's over eight years old. And our photo booking program, which is where we process each arrestee in the station, that's from the late 1990s. As you can imagine, that's based on a old access database that has been a little behind the times for a while, but we've made it work. The problem we're at now is the video card in the computer is failing. You're talking well over $1,000 just to get a new one just for that. In addition to the program is not being updated on a regular basis now. So to work out any bugs or any issues that come up is an issue. What we're looking to do is right now, we do two processes when we arrest someone. We input all their data and we take a photo. And then we go and we input all their data and we take their fingerprints. The photo is kept for our storage purposes, for lineup purposes, for court purposes, for DUIs, we take pictures of their, you know, some evidentiary purposes. Then on the fingerprint side, what used to be eight years ago, it was a need, but now it's a requirement. Prior to taking anyone out to county, we have to have them verified through LiveScan because it's become a tool that virtually every police department uses. Same thing if you're looking to transfer to any other county or any other department. They want to make sure that they've been verified through the FBI who they are on LiveScan. So what it comes down to, this is kind of a two-part that we're looking to do. This was a budgeted item and we're going to come in a couple of thousand dollars under budget. But what we're looking to do is purchase a new, upgrade our current fingerprinting station and add on to that from the same company, a photo booking, new camera, computer. This will all be contained into one system that's going to be, not only be used for court and our transmittal purposes, but also conduct lineups, investigative lineups. If we get someone reported to be, you know, an offender between a certain age, a certain height, we're able to run their, put those general things into a data, into a query and it'll search for those types of matching records. In addition to that, that's a definite, we really need to do that now. These things are, especially the photo booking is beyond its useful life and it's failing now, requiring some manual entry. But we'd also like to migrate all of our past records into this new database. So we're not just starting fresh with, you know, whenever this new system would be ordered, we're able to go back into history, into the past and recreate some of the old information. And then we don't have to maintain two systems. That would allow us to trade in the current LiveScan system and which is why some of the budget number is a little less than we thought. Back in 2003, we were able to get a grant for this system. There's no grants available at this time. And finally, one thing that's not on the memo is we would be due next month for a $3,000 maintenance fee on our current system. So this cost total of $22,190. While it's from a different budget amount, we're not going to have to pay $3,000 in maintenance this year for the system either. So we'd be looking to go ahead and purchase a new consolidated system.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we buy these two pieces of equipment for the police department at a price of $22,190. So I have a second?
Second.
So this system that you're getting will be a completely new system? That's the first part of the question. Second part is of you being able to input old data. Is that easily done? Is that going to require a lot of time, consultants or any special things?
This is a completely new system. You know, the, there's, everything's going to be brand new. So should give us another, I would hope, eight to 10 years and I think that's, can be easily be obtained. The second part is, any cost for the conversion, short of our IT, our in-house IT person sending them the database, is all going to be handled by this company. We're not going to expend any time on it. That's included in this cost because that's, they have the specialty to do that. So it'll be very minimal on our part, our involvement in that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else got any questions? All right. All in favor? How about down that end? Nobody said aye down that end?
Aye.
Oh, okay. It passes. All right. Items to be consideration for a future meeting. A quiet zone. That's the train noise that we have to see if we can get some way of making the trains start, stop blowing their whistles. But that's going to be pretty hard. Nothing else? I recommend, yes?
If I may, one of the things that was on the minutes from last time was the fire district dispatching and we'd never had any kind of a conclusion. The fire chief didn't say whether he would or not. He didn't say whether he would have his, his own committee discuss it. I'd still like to question them about what, why we're taking that dispatching away from the city when we're already subsidizing it and it's going to add time to the time it takes for the fire department to respond.
Can we put that on our agenda?
From my understanding, they're not planning on coming to a meeting. They declined the invitation to do so last time. We have not received any formal notice that they are planning on leaving. Although informally, that's what we're hearing, they have to provide us with 90 days notice if they do so. I anticipate that coming at some point in the near future. But unfortunately, we can't compel them to answer. They're basically a subcontractor of us for those services.
If I may?
Yes, sir.
So if what I hear from you is correct, they're ignoring any suggestions or any meetings or anything else that we've suggested. They will not come and talk to us and they're, they don't want to be on TV.
From my understanding, they declined to come and speak before the, before the council.
That's interesting. I think the citizens should understand that, that they're not, they're not coming to see, to talk to us because they don't want to be on TV. It's pretty disgusting.
I'd like to join that. If they do change, it's going to take longer for the ambulances and the fire department to come for any house that might burn or somebody that needs it right away because it's got to go through two phones before it gets here to Wooddale. And the operator that's operating the phones don't know the streets as good as the operators that are here in the police department. And I think it's a very bad idea. And I told him that once before and I told him that one time at a meet, that I bumped into him. So I'm strictly against them moving. Anything else? Yes, ma'am.
On the subject of meeting, I did talk to the fire chief and a couple of their commissioners. One of their commissioners, the fire chief, would meet with the city, but on a, like a, with myself and maybe a couple of the aldermen and staff. Bottom line is, they've made up their mind. Every time I suggested something else, another thing came out. The use of having that meeting for them to tell us that they're going to go when we already know they're going to go is.
Well, it's just that the citizens of Wooddale should know what's happening. Either by a reverse 9/11 or something to tell them that the fire department is moving out of the police department. Now, we can't do that until they move out, but you should let them know.
I would say if there's a change in service and how we conduct our procedures, which it certainly will change, they, they'll be notified of some additional steps that may need to be taken.
Alderman Wesley?
I will tell you, me and Mr. Art Woods has been attending the fire board meeting. And we sat through their budget talking too. I will tell you that they do have a tentative agreement with, I believe, NORCOM? NORCOM or DUCOM? So they are leaving, no doubt about it. They have a written agreement with them already. They are working out the details now. The other thing that is my concern is that I have heard through the grapevine that the fire district was looking for us to pay for them to move their equipment out of our dispatching center. And I just want the council to know.